The approval of last meeting's minutes.
Motion.
Moved by Pat, seconded by John. All those in favor? Four in favor? Eighty-one Ps. Mike?
Larry says, "Quick, quick, quick." Ready?
We're ready.
Eighty-one P plan on Fairview Road, located here on the bottom of the page, right across the street from North Terrace, which is shown here. What we have is pre-existing, non-conforming lot out in the front. However, the parcel that we're dealing with is the larger of the two parcels, shown here in orange. And we're here representing Residential Recovery Capital Holdings, number two LLC. They've acquired this land and they're trying to sell it. There's a long history with the parcels, however, what we, what you end up with is two parcels that were split from the, I believe, it was under one ownership at one time. Way back, even before 1965, it was subdivided, leaving this lot, fairly small lot, and this one being the larger lot. And there's an existing structure located right in this area here. There's a blow-up showing where that existing structure sits with respect to the existing property line, and it's slightly over the property line, however, it's used by the front parcel. So what this eighty-one P plan is doing is cutting out, is proposing to cut out 672 square feet, shown here in the hatched pink, and conveying it from the rear lot to the front lot. And this does several things: cleans up the use, cleans up this building being over the property line. Both parties are in agreement. The subdivision of this parcel in this area is conforming to the structures for the new setbacks, and that's what's being proposed. I believe Larry has seen this and has talked to town council, is my understanding as well. And it's all...
It's endorseable?
It's endorseable, correct.
Can you just give a quick recap? Residential Recovery ends up with what?
This foreclosed property here.
The pool and...
Yeah, the larger rear portion, which...
Well, it's very difficult to distinguish what was going on and whose was whose.
Yeah, so the existing lots, the way they are now. There's a lot line that exists today, that subdivides a lot, and it carries down right along here in the orange, okay? That's the way it exists today.
So they're basically relocating a back lot...
Right up to here. That's the way it exists. So we're taking this chunk and gonna convey that over to the front parcel, which will clean up a lot of things, so to speak, like use. This front parcel uses this. That's their garage and shed and...
Formerly all in one family, so...
All in one family, correct.
Just out of foolish curiosity, the way you did the lot line, are they able to access the garage? The shed or whatever you want to call it now?
Yes, just, yes, that would stay the same. The way they use it now, there's stairs, they're not, it doesn't, they don't drive into it. It's a shed with stairs and different elevation. The property drops off quite a bit, right around this area, and that's what all the stairs are. So they're gonna be able to use it the same, and that's what this does. It just conveys it to the front portion and cleans up, cleans up the use, cleans up where the property line goes through the structure.
That's what they should've done in the first place.
No, no, I understand, I'm just trying to follow along, it's just...
Yeah, the whole thing is, it'd been kind of a mess.
Long history, way before zoning was enacted, it's, that's the way it is now. Like I said, conveying this out will clean it up.
Do you have the Mylar?
Yes.
They're gonna vote, so you wanna give it to me?
Motion, motion to sign the eighty-one P.
I'll say it. Moved by Joe, seconded by John to sign the eighty-one P. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? unanimous of four.
I want these back.
Problem is you have way too much detail. Yeah, you know what, for once, you put way too much stuff in there, and I couldn't figure out exactly what...
That's why it's at such a big scale. One inch equals ten and it still shows.
I mean, yeah, it's just...
Basically, this has been made a lot...
No, I know, but you have the planting budget, it's just, I couldn't, couldn't quite figure that one. Thank you.
Is that the, is the only eighty-one P, Larry?
Yep, that's the only one.
Okay, Chad? In and out.
Push the date out on this, right?
You have to grab one of the microphones.
Choose one, huh?
Choose wisely.
Chad Boardman, representing Eastland Partners for the Walden Woods condominium development, of course, on Route 85. Here back again to give another update of the Charles River Bike Path Extension. And pleased to report that we did pave a section from, mainly from the Kentucky Fried Chicken Friendly's parking lot to a water crossing. So that's all paved. We did the drainage down near Oliva's property on Parkhurst and the Catholic School down towards there. We just finished that, actually, today. So we worked with the Highway Department and, of course, the town engineer. Yeah, the test is tomorrow, yes. Cross our fingers. We did a couple different, different things down there, so hopefully that'll alleviate it some. With that said, we're gonna be doing a new sidewalk. Apparently, the Highway Department is doing a section of some new paving on, oh boy, Reno might know, on a side street of the, a street where Oliva's is, or the...
Cook.
It's a Cook Street, yes, Cook Street, yep. So we're doing a new section of curbing along there that they were gonna do. We're gonna do that for them, and we're trying to get that done in the next week. So they're gonna be doing some grinding and some street updates. So everything that we do will tie into the new pavement, of course, on Cook Street as well. And that includes a couple of new handicapped ramps that weren't presently planned for, but we'll be doing, of course. As for the porous pavement, we're still on schedule to finish this by, you know, the late fall. Everything seems to be going pretty good, actually, believe it or not. There's a few, few things we gotta tighten up. Just some gates to be ordered and things like that, but other than that, everything's smooth as can be for right now. So no more ledge and blasting, and we seem to be out of the, you know, woods for that. So that's about it for where the trail stands.
That's great.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
The last printed schedule looked like it may go slightly into November, which is beyond the dates, so...
Really the safety of just touch up for...
Oh, penalty time.
Signs.
Penalty time.
Yeah, if anything special orders. Special, you know, signs or whatnot, that's, you know, and typically washouts in the fall, I mean...
Well, we had prepared that...
Extension with Joe, I think he was taking care of that, right?
Yeah, I hadn't heard back from him today. Joey Attenellis was going to talk to all the parties involved. But to the extent that the planning board can, can get a handle on whether or not this is an appropriate approach, counsel for the applicant has basically signed off on it. Whether the applicant and the bank has signed off on it are different questions, but their counsel feels that this is an appropriate format. And to the extent that you could give your opinion on that tonight, that would be helpful, because they would be bringing it back at probably your first meeting in November, if we can get it all done that soon.
And it might even be done by then, you know, of course, so I'll be back September, of course.
Yeah. So in the likelihood that it's needed, we'd recommend this is a proper form. If it's not needed, then obviously, we won't be doing it.
I'm not necessarily opposed to the extension, but can we wait till next month and see how close she is before we act upon that?
Right, that's what I said, yeah. Don't act tonight, just other than to approve the form, so to speak.
Jerry's okay with it, that's fine.
Yeah, comments?
No, that's fine.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The school.
Don't play that tomorrow.
You're up.
Hello?
Hello.
Be really quick.
Time's up.
What's that?
Time's up.
I'm Josh Burgle, landscape architect, representing the Woodland School. This is basically the same site plan that we showed last time. There's been very, very slight changes to meet requirements for the wetland requirements. And then Nate is going to talk about some of the questions you had last time.
Will you push that so the audience can see it?
I can.
Give them a small one. You got a half-size, right out there. Hadn't there a half-size print? That's exactly what's on the board.
Thank you.
Another good reason to have... Well, if anybody wants one, I don't know if any... Yeah, once you start throwing stuff, everybody comes up to the curb.
So, any questions?
Good evening, everyone. Nathan Ketchel with Garcia, Luskin, De Souza, the civil engineers on the project. Based on the last hearing, there were a few comments regarding adding future infrastructure for a concession stand up at the soccer field, as well as pertinences for future field lighting. So those items have been added into the construction documents. What we'll do is we'll maintain the existing sewer manhole that the existing school connects to and run a stubbed or a capped six-inch PVC pipe for future connection. We've also extended, we had had an existing water line coming up to a drinking fountain. We enlarged that pipe and then added a stub over to a common area as well, plus, you know, the additional handholes associated with future lighting for the field. Actually, after last meeting, I did realize that when I said that the existing grade was approximately 522 around the existing school, I was mistaken. I had looked at one area where there was a raised planter to get that grade from. The existing building finished floor is approximately 51890. So the existing grade outside the building there ranges from 51850 up to 519. So with the crown of the field at the 519 and perimeter elevations at 51850, there really is not a large amount of cut going on in the area. So groundwater should not be an issue. The borings and the estimated seasonal high groundwater have been added to the plans. They are actually much lower. I believe there's at least five or six feet of separation to the field surface, which, again, if there was an upwelling of groundwater, the perimeter drainage system, as well as the flat J-drain system within the field itself, would intercept that water. So essentially, those are the changes that have been, have taken place up in the north part of the site. We did also add the additional gate valve just to the north of the domestic water service. That way, if they need to do a shutdown of the northwest corner, they could and still maintain the domestic and fire service at the same time.
And we received a letter from the Sewer Department. It's in your package.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, on the extension of the water line, how are you terminating that for up by the field area?
Right now, it will be left as a capped stub with a corporation valve located within a foot or two of the T-location.
So that section that goes, so you would shut it, you would shut it down at that location in the winter at the corporation stop?
Yes.
I'm just worried about freezing, that's all.
Yes, that would be the case.
Okay. No, I didn't have anything else.
No, no, they addressed it.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion, we approve the...
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I speak to the board?
Yes.
My name is Shirley Nero, seven North Vine Street. Could they explain to me where Debbie Lane is? I see two entrances to the school, and there's a road adjacent.
Debbie Lane's not existing in that, off of North Vine Street.
Yes, it does. It's a dirt road right now. It's on...
It's a, it was a disapproved, dissolved subdivision. The Debbie Lane is on, off of Manuteian and Wayne.
It's a cul-de-sac now, it ends as a cul-de-sac.
Well, the latest, the latest...
No, I own the property.
Yeah, the latest subdivision stubs a future roadway connection right across from the driveway.
That's...
You should at least have it connecting. You're gonna have three roads dumping all in one spot. Do you know what I'm saying?
Well, across from the driveway, it's the correct location.
Yeah.
I don't know if it is. I'm just, that was my question, where is Debbie Lane? The reason there's a cul-de-sac, it's a temporary cul-de-sac required by the planning board, so my daughter could build one house.
Yep.
It's temporary.
Yeah, the, when the road goes through, when the road goes through, it'll come out across from the driveway.
I need to know which...
Across from the main, sure, across from the main driveway. You know where Debbie...
He has to come back. But then he's...
You'd have to come back with a subdivision to do that. You'd have to come back with a subdivision to further develop the property, but the road would come out right across from the entry.
This?
No, from the other one.
This?
The major one, yes.
And this is further on?
Yeah, just it's further west.
That's not how it's showing with the... I guess that's MapQuest or whatever that is. The Google Maps that overlay it.
I don't know.
I know it's not the school's responsibility to put on the road, though.
But the, yeah, the school, the school isn't...
I just think it's a safety hazard to have three roads in different locations within 100 feet, emptying on North Vine Street. And I want to be sure that it lines up with that, where that road is going to come out of North Vine Street.
Yes.
I'm on the corner, I live on the corner of Debbie Lane and North Vine Street, so I'm familiar with what's going on. And I just want to make sure there is, it'll cause an accident.
Well, the street...
It's a cross, you can see it in the area.
It's not what's showing on this map.
The street will be across from where the main entrance is. But the entrances to the school property are not streets, they're driveways.
I understand, I'm just saying for safety.
For safety, that's why it lines up.
That's what I...
Yeah.
Okay, I have, may I present my concerns very quickly?
Yes.
Excuse me, but the meeting was closed at the last meeting.
I was ill at the last meeting, and I wasn't notified.
Well, it's a site plan review, so...
Can I at least express, this is not going to take long, and it's easy.
Yes.
Okay. I have concerns about the traffic and pollution. I have ways of mitigating it. If you could set back that parking lot a little bit more. If you could make the traffic flow faster, which they say they do, but it never does. And if you could replace trees by substituting the equivalent trees that you're taking down. I'm gonna give you studies. I hope you take them seriously. I know your charge is to enact town laws. And the designer and the architects and the engineers are to satisfy the school building committee, but nobody looks beyond what we're doing to the children. So I'm gonna give you, and if you would please pass them on, to mitigate the noise, here are the real problems with health issues. The particular matter from the buses, and I'll just go quickly through it. Children are at special, special risk, and we're risking them. First time I heard this, I thought it was from a father left crazy lady. And that's probably just what you think, but it's true. Harvard, Department, Yale. You look, you just put two words into it and you're able to find out what's happening. The exhaust from the buses, as the kids are going through, exacerbate asthma, respiratory illnesses, headaches, fatigue, nervous system, cardiovascular effects, especially for kids.
Can I just stop you for a quick second? Because I do believe that they, they even have signs up at the high school, if I recall correctly, that they can't let the buses run any longer than 10 or 15, five minutes? So I hear what you're saying, but that's already been addressed.
I live across the street.
Ma'am, I'm just, I'm just going by the signs that are already there.
The reality, the reality is...
I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm just simply saying that...
The bus is back up, because the corner of Congress and North Vine is a backup traffic street. The bus is back up for 10 minutes, and the kids are walking through it on the sidewalk. That's why I asked, speed up the traffic. Add some more greenery to absorb this pollutant. Diesel fuel is a killer, I never knew it. I'm gonna give you these studies, you'll probably put them in the circular file. Please, we don't use lead paint anymore. We don't use asbestos anymore. We don't use any of the pollutants that, when we grew up as kids, you did. Somebody's gotta take charge.
Well...
Who? To which board?
You should go see the school board and have them buy electric buses. It's not, to us, we're just, we're just doing the site plan.
So nobody cares. What I'm asking for is in your review, is trees...
No, I can't control if it's a propane bus, an electric bus, or a diesel.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
You're complaining about traffic that's gonna back up, which is driven by a diesel bus. I can't, I can't help that.
If you have anything else, let's present it, and we go...
I'm asking you to mitigate, not to have electric buses. I'm asking for tree replacements and to move that parking lot further back from the street. This one.
I think you're gonna show that there's probably restraints from the wetlands.
Wetlands are better than children. Let's protect the frogs, the weeds. This is what I'm saying.
Okay.
This is dangerous.
This is not gonna be a debating society. If you have anything else...
Can we move that parking lot?
No, no.
You conform to the wetlands.
This is sad world.
Well, these people are engineers, and they know what they're doing.
No, they don't.
Which parking lot are you even referring to?
I bet if you pass each engineer, they...
Why is that an issue with buses?
This is not a debate, this is...
Why is that an issue with buses in that parking lot, ma'am?
Because here are your buses, and here are your kids.
Why are my buses out there? They're gonna come into the site and stop the site.
They're going to be backed up right in the...
No, they're not. I don't believe they're gonna be backed up.
If you have more information to give, give it to me.
Again, we're not gonna, if you have anything else to present...
No.
Okay, then, thank you.
Thank you. Could you at least please? It's dangerous.
It's a pleasure of the board.
The motion on the floor?
It was... You made the motion?
Yeah, most of approved the site plan.
Motion approved the site plan by Joe.
I'll say it.
Seconded by John. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous of five.
Certainly. I'll try and, I'll try and catch up with Matt, because he, the members are... Well, we'll go through on the cover sheet and figure out the limited number of actual site plan Mylars.
Next to Leo?
Because we don't need all this, we don't need the demo stuff.
Okay, six, six Commercial Way, you're up.
Well... Do you want to wait till the end of the meeting, which hopefully will go quicker now?
Mr. Cadelli will be abstaining from this.
So this is a proposal for...
You can put it right up on the board. Get it up there.
I can read through my report, if that'll help, speed it up a little.
Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah, this amended site plan, Milford Solar LLC, at six Commercial Way. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to install a roof-mounted, large-scale solar energy system on the existing building at the subject property. Large-scale solar energy systems are permitted use in the IB district via site plan review and further subject to the requirements of Section 3.15 of the zoning bylaw. The proposed installation will be entirely on the roof, with any other ancillary equipment to be located inside the building. No other outdoor changes are being proposed to the property. And I've attached to Section 315 a copy for your reference that directly follows my report. The proposal appears to meet all applicable provisions of the zoning bylaw. The abandonment, decommissioning, and surety provisions of Section 3.15 are primarily intended for ground-mounted installations and not for roof-mounted installations of this type. Therefore, recommend the amended site plan be approved or submitted, subject to relative, to relevant agency comments and not needing to comply with the, with the surety or abandonment, decommissioning sections.
Okay, I get the letters, Town Engineer approved.
Yep.
Fire Department, Water Department. The Commissioner of Disability.
That's being resolved.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the plan, nothing was changing, and it was just that the site plan that was submitted didn't necessarily show all the existing conditions, so that's being addressed.
Okay, that's... Any comments from the board? It's a pleasure of the board.
They're all gonna be on the roof, correct?
Correct, yep.
And there's somewhere some sample, toward the back, or some sample photos of similar installations.
I don't have a problem with it at all.
Make a motion, we approve the amended site plan. Moved by Joe to approve the amended site plan.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Lena. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of five. Four. Oh, excuse me, unanimous of four, sorry.
No, the rest of our buildings are like that, too. The other ones, we didn't have to come because we changed the bylaw.
You know, there are a lot of people doing that.
Oh, my steak, my steak's getting cold.
Well, I just celebrated my daughter's birthday.
The signed Mylar. Yeah, three prints of the signed Mylar, yeah.
Okay. Anybody with the...
Number six, Larry?
Yes. We have the Mylars for signature for Sunil across in Definity Plan. It's been approved. The 20-day appeal period is long past. The twenty day appeal period is long past. So they're endorseable. I assumed you would wanna wait till after, at the end of the meeting, to endorse them, but you do need a motion to do that. And before you assign the milars, you would want to approve the conditional approval contract if it meets your satisfaction, other than the typo-
It met Jerry's, right?
Pardon?
Jerry reviewed it.
I don't know that he's seen it recently. This is the standard form that we customize for each development. So we've gone over it several times with the developer as late as today.
I don't have any issues with the provided that-
That was a good question, because I think-
It's been okayed through Jerry, because I know there was a clarity issues as far as the inspections and so on and so forth.
Right.
I just wanna make sure that that's accurately covered.
Well, the, yeah, the version that's in front of you is updated from the one that's numbered number six in the packet. So these were on the table tonight, because that's as soon as I could get it to you. But there is a special provision for an onsite inspector selected by a town engineer and hired by the developer for a minimum of twenty hours per week or is directed by a town engineer. That's standard practice, so the specific contracts to do it.
I just wanna make sure that Jerry's seen it and said yes, that that's acceptable. That's all I care about.
Well-
Because I know we can write anything you want, but if push comes to shove and it's an issue-
Shouldn't there be a letter from Jerry in this, though?
No.
I just wanted his review.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is, this is our standard, our standard Form E, so-
I do remember that.
He hasn't reviewed this.
I'll make a motion. Again, subject to just Jerry's given his final reading, that's all, if that's okay.
I'll go along with that.
I don't think it will take Jerry that long to review that and say you're all set, so I'll make the motion.
Are you gonna be around tomorrow, Babe?
Yeah, later.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Well, we can even sign it and let Larry hold it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jerry's okay with it released.
You don't have to hold up the process other than the fact that I don't think it will take Jerry more than fifteen minutes to say you're fine. And if in fact that there's a change, then obviously, the motion would be also reflective of, you know, adopting Jerry's changes as required. So I'll modify the motion to that.
It's a good point.
Yeah, and you'll have to, I'm gonna have to hold the plans anyway, because the town clerk can't sign off until she gets back from vacation.
There you go, so it works out fine. And I'll also make the motion to endorse the milars.
Second. Moved by Pat to sign the conditional approval contract subject to Jerry's review and to sign the milars, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And unanimous of five.
Okay, moving right along.
Okay. COI zoning.
Yes. Agenda I had made, I put the memo from the IDC as the cover sheet for the packet. Let me get a couple of maps here.
He puts it farther away so you can't see it. I said you put it farther away so you can't see it.
Well, you can't read that one anyway. Make it better. That's the one. The aerial was so dark you couldn't see the lines anywhere, so. Just for reference.
Break to see your color in there, Larry.
Well, this is the computer did, so. All right, as you recall from your prior meeting and maybe even the meeting before that, we'd been talking about what to do, if anything, with the commercial zoning on the west end of Main Street as it goes to the Hope Dale Town Line. As you can see on the zoning sheet here, there's a strip of CB zoning that I'd been complaining about for a long time, because it didn't even cover the entire lots. There were some other issues about potential future development in the area that I thought that the office residential zone might be an appropriate zone to look at, to apply in that area. When we first talked about it, my suggestion had been, and the IDC at that point had, had agreed that we should get rid of as much of the CB zoning as possible and only leave CB in the areas, as we talked about at the last meeting, where there was already substantial commercial development and change everything else over to office residential. Obviously, the board had decided against that, as we reflect in our memo. I took that back to the IDC. We've got at least one, two IDC members here that were at the meeting. We discussed, you know, the propriety of leaving the CB zone. And I think IDC agreed with the planning board that it should at least be expanded to the properties that front on Main Street that are in that zone and try to make as much sense out of the CB zone if we're gonna keep CB zoning there. But they still felt, and some of the board members even felt, that applying the office residential zone around the hospital campus in that whole neighborhood of 140 and 16 over to the Hope Dale Town Line still might make some sense. So that's what we put together and came back with tonight. There's still just barely time to get some of these things in for a fall town meeting. So I wanted to try to go over them a little bit tonight, just to bring you up to speed on what all of that would look like. So as you can see from the aerial photo, the hospital campus here, you've got the Nelson Heights neighborhood. Here's Cape Road, Route 140, Route 16 going through, and there's the Hope Dale Town Line where you can't see parcels anymore. There really are parcels in Hope Dale, our system just doesn't think so. So the idea would be to pick up where the commercial C-zone currently ends on 140 and change that whole frontage down past the Route 16 intersection to OR, include the hospital campus and the Nelson Heights area into an OR zone. There have been some interest, well, over several months, from different, different parties about potential development in the area. Obviously, not the cancer center or the medical center sites, but some of the adjacent properties. But they've been separate, separate development proposals on varying sized parcels. And this would be a way for the town to kind of get ahead of that whole situation where there seems to be interest and a need for probably medical related offices, professional offices. And as it turns out, that's one of the main things that the office residential zone was created for, was to allow for those kinds of uses. Originally, it was applied downtown, on Congress Street, from the post office up to West Street in areas where there are larger homes that could be maintained if the first floors, say, were converted to a professional office. But it didn't preclude the demo of buildings if they were in bad condition and a redevelopment of a professional office building. But to be able to apply that kind of a zoning district in this area, because it's basically an RA zone that in effect has this overlay of professional office uses by virtue of being called office residential now, it would not make anything nonconforming by applying it here. Because the residential standards are still the same as if they were RA, which is what this whole area is owned now, except for the few buildings down here, and some of them the hospital owns already anyway.
Larry, you got the hospital and the cancer center in that OR zone, OR area. Why would we, that's still nonconforming to the-
Well, that's, that's what-
Why don't we take that area out?
Well, it would-
Even if we have to make another zoning-
Well, it wouldn't make it nonconforming based on the three zoning articles that are attached in the packet. The first article changes the text of the bylaw so that the OR zone specifically would allow for the hospital use. In fact, it would allow for the helostop that the hospital has and specifically provide for that as an accessory use to the hospital. So it would do nothing in terms of the status of the hospital itself or the cancer center. But what it does is create a contiguous area that, that makes sense on the map. If you only, if you took out the hospital, now the line would come around here and then would cut this off from the rest of that. So it would make a contiguous zone without affecting the hospital, basically.
As long as it doesn't make it, again, if it's in the zoning.
Yeah, that's what that first text-
And then the hospital, if they were to do any other, any further additions or anything, would only have to go through the special permit for the OR zone.
One of the things I'd like to do if we were to do this, and I'm not adverse to doing this, per se, but I don't see this for fall town meeting.
No reason.
I'm not sure what the, all of a sudden, the big rush is, but I'm not, I'm not for that. But one of the things I'd like to do is get the hospital in, in terms of what they foresee, at least in their terms of their future development. And let's plan for that now if we're gonna make this type of change. You know, should it extend a little bit further? Is that more than where they're going? What are their, what's, what's their crystal ball? I understand it's crystal ball probably at this point, considering they're just trying to start a major expansion now and, you know, when the next one may be, who knows? But I'd like to get their input onto it.
They're wishless.
Well, we would, we would do that if it, if there was interest for the planning board to move forward on it.
Well, as I said, I'm not adverse to doing this change. I just don't see it happening for fall town meeting, because I think there are some steps that we need to make before town meeting. And obviously, we have to have a public hearing before that. And I don't, I don't think it needs to be that rushed, but I, I'm not adverse to making the changes. That's me.
Okay, well, in the, in the context of the information that, that I'd gotten wind of, that I've heard of from, from different sources, different developers or representatives of developers, that there's interest in that area, that to me doesn't make sense to force developers on a site by site and a smaller site basis to come in individually and try to seek zoning changes where we could provide for it ahead of time, but do it in a manner that we felt was comprehensive. And this certainly gives them a comprehensive, them in terms of the AG's office looking at a zoning map change. That it's, that's clearly not spot zoning, where maybe some of these other proposals almost verge on being small enough to be considered spot zoning. So we could avoid that, accommodate what I see as some fairly soon, some, some, some office development, medical office related development. And we'd be ahead of the game. But certainly, the text changes that Babe mentioned earlier, or questioned earlier, would if anything, solve some of the problems that the hospital has now, because there was never any specific provision for a heliport in a residential zone. So whether or not they would still want, from their council standpoint, they may still wanna go back and get variances and special permits just because of the long string of variances and special permits that they've had over the years. Which, if they wanna do that, that's fine. There's no, there's nothing that says they can't do that. But to Babe's point, some, some of the proposals that they might have may only need site plan review under, under the new one, because, you know. So I guess, time wise, it, it would benefit the town from an economic development standpoint, because we would be ahead of the game preparing a zoning configuration on the map that, from what we can tell now, looking at it, makes sense. If somebody wants to do something else later, we can always come back and take a look at it, but this would-
I understand that, but I, I think we're still ahead of the game eight months from now, if I go to regular town meeting.
Well, I think that's part of the, part of the concern, that waiting until May, May or June town meeting-
I don't see it, I don't see it happening for the fall town meeting. That's my own opinion. The board, the rest of the board can express theirs. I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna vote on something that's put up in front of me with a bunch of lines without understanding it. For me to understand those lines and to make sure that they're correct, I'd like to get input from the people in that area and, and then have a public hearing besides. And not just, not just have a public hearing and expect people to show up here. I, I wanna have people actually come in beforehand so that I understand their things. I don't see that happening at fall town meeting. That's me.
Yeah, there are two, there, there's at least one meeting between now and when you would hold a public hearing that we could have people-
I think he's looking from, I think he's looking from input, not only from the hospital, but from perhaps some others in that area. Fundamentally, I mean, you have a lot of those small lots. I don't know how mathematically it would work unless you bought multiple properties at once, knowing that you had to also offer off street parking and so on and so forth. So I, I just, I'm with Joe. I don't think consumption, it's bad. I just don't see putting the gun to the head and pulling the trigger today. That's, I guess, is what I'm, I'm with Joe on that.
I can understand Joe's point. I, I can see that. And if I remember correctly, when the hospital was with us, somewhere down the road, they were gonna connect the ER with the new building, is, is from what I remember.
I think, I'm looking at it, based on what they talked about, Larry's incorporated pretty much what I, what they had said at the time. I mean, I think this, Hunsun slip is, is within the zone and picked up. But I just, I just wanna know what the future holds. I mean, they obviously, and maybe you know this, Larry, but I don't, they own other property up there that is not being used as part of hospital property right now. They may rent it out, they may do whatever. They, they may have, they may have dibs on other property, but I, I don't see- Doing this in the fall and then having the hospital come back and say, oh, did you include this piece of property? And then find out, oh, no, we didn't. Then we didn't do our job. And I'm not gonna vote for something until I know that, until I know what they're doing. Because take the hospital property out of that, and you're not doing all that much. I mean, they're, they're the major, major owner in that area. So I, I, I need to feel comfortable that I know where they're going. And, and, you know, I don't know that there's any guarantee that we can have, we can schedule them to come in at the next meeting and they're gonna be here or be able to talk on that kinda stuff. I mean, I think we have to give them the courtesy of giving them some amount of time to, to explain what they wanna present to us at that point in time. Because obviously, it's, again, it's a, it's somewhat a crystal ball to them. And I think they, that we owe them at least the amount of, some amount of time to go over what they wanna present to us. And hey, if they don't wanna present to us, that's fine, too. At that point in time, I can at least say I made the effort to, to find out what was going on.
Good point.
I agree.
I agree with you, Joe.
Again, I agree, I definitely agree with the concept, because again, I said that. And I, I would like to hear from, to, again, it's, it's the major, it's the major area that we could be, that can be built out there and, like to talk to them. If somebody was to come in and do a spot, a spot zoning, we could rezone the whole thing at that time in the future, because they'd have to wait till the May, May town meeting anyway, so.
I mean, I'm not sure if there's any other, any other major owner up there that, you know, would be worthwhile talking about that's in that zone. But, you know, again, it would be something that I, if there is, I, I'd certainly like to hear from them. Maybe, maybe there's enough residential area, you know, I'm looking from this side, that maybe there's a neighborhood area that would be, that would be good to hear from, you know, send them out a letter and say, hey, we'd like to hear from you. You know, if they come in, fine. But I, I, in doing this kinda change, I'd like to give people the opportunity. And, and I know what we usually get when we post a, a meeting, we don't usually get that. And I think this, this deserves the board going out to some extent on an outreach to say, to send something out officially ourselves and say, we'd like you to come in and talk to us about it.
Right, and in terms of, from a legal standpoint, you're not required to notify even the owners, let alone the owners.
No, we understand. We understand, if we're gonna do a major zoning change in the area that the hospital's in-
In their affected area, yes.
We definitely want them to-
But we have, we have the-
We want them to know when they have input.
At some point, to, to everybody that would be inside that, that line. So we could go ahead and do that and, and schedule time at, at a, at a future meeting to start talking about it, so.
Again, the concept is, is fantastic.
I mean, I would, I would suggest, I mean, as a first step, I would suggest that you reach out to the hospital and, and ask them to, if they, if they would be willing to come in and talk to us, if that be the next meeting or the meeting after that, probably the meeting after that being more appropriate, second meeting in September.
Yep.
I would, I would suggest that, you know, I would certainly be interested in hearing what they have to say if they're willing to do that. And then, if you can, I don't know what the rest of the board, but I, but I would, I'd, I'd like to take some time and just look and see if there's, if there's lot, areas where there's a significant amount of residential- significant amount of residential houses existing, that maybe we send out to that neighborhood to see what they think, if there's that type of change.
Well, yeah, I was going to notify everybody inside.
Well, no, I don't want to notify. That's what I'm saying. I, I think that, that may get to the point of being unruly.
I think that the major, just quick, quick memory, I think the major property owners, when you exclude the hospitals, probably going to be Vodilato across the street, replacement auto parts down the street in Franks. And again, that's just.
They're going to stay in the CB, so that's.
You didn't, it's not that far down?
No, you'd have, no. You'd have the Nelson Heights area.
Yeah, there's, there's one.
You'd have the corner at 140 and, and, I'm sorry, at 140 and 16. And then you'd have everything north of the cancer center that's residential up to where the CC zone.
There's a bunch of resi.
So the majority of the people you'd be notifying are residential.
I'm, I'm just thinking that that, that may be more appropriate to be a separate meeting than the hospital one. I don't know if it's going to be on the schedule or not, but I'm just saying that that may be a separate meeting, but.
Well, yeah, we can divvy it up that way. But I was, I was just saying that any of the other owners are predominantly residential.
Yeah, I don't know if there needs to be multiple ones past that, but I'm just thinking that those, those may be the two meetings that we need and those are two separate meetings.
Well, then the last thing is, is the other area that we were talking about, adjusting the CB line, which wouldn't get into the text change, that's the first in the packet. It would be the last proposal. So this is what it would look like to adjust, in my estimation, adjust the CB line to match property boundaries. The two exceptions would be up here on Mayhew Slip, there's one lot on the corner that would get included that's entirely outside, just barely, of the zone. So you'd extend this up Water Street to Mayhew Slip. So the CB would come over there. And there's a lot or two over here on Taylor. But in terms of the lay of the land, by the time you extend the zoning boundary on this lot all the way out, it doesn't make sense not to include those. These other two are just split lots. And these are split lots. This is the auto parts place that's always had an adjacent lot that they've used. That's never been included in the CB zone. The stuff across the street, there's that barn, the warehouse type use that, that's never been in the zone.
The dry cleaner.
No. And then there's the Fruit Street Playground. But as you start extending the line or the zone back to the property lines, that's what it would look like. So the only thing where the perimeter of this wouldn't expand is this area along here from Hollis back up to South Main. And if anything, it should contract. But I figured we could leave that for now because we may want to look at South Main Street at some point in the near future anyway, for some other reasons. So in theory, we could do this, this fall if you wanted, or just wait and, and do everything at the annual. Because this isn't, this isn't the pressing issue that the other one, that prompted this whole thing.
Well, you're going to, it's going to have to be surveyed and everything to, to do it, so it's going to take some time.
Well, it would need to be surveyed, they just use the property line.
We have the, have a legal description that, that can do it. But we can wait on that till the annual as well, if you like. But does that seem, I mean, that's what it would look like based on what we talked about.
That's exactly, that's exactly what I think.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
Sure, you're right on.
That's fine.
Yeah. No, and again, it cleans that up nicely, too, again.
I mean, Babe, your chairman, this one's, this one's totally up to you. But in a certain sense, it makes it easier, if we were to go, to me, it would make it easier to go forward with this now. Because trying to do both of them at town meeting could get, could get a little more difficult. So you may.
It's your pleasure.
I'd be, I'd be more, yeah, I'd be more willing to take a look at this for fall town meeting where I, you know, I, I think we all know what the issues are. And we've had owners come in where they've got split lots that make no sense whatsoever. And, and it's really a hardship for people. And it's really not changing what people can do next to, next to the other lots anyway. So I'd be more have to go with something like this at fall, at fall town meeting. And I think splitting it up may make a little more sense at town meeting itself than trying to get up there twice and have two zoning articles that are changing things.
Absolutely. All right. We'll do that. Thank you.
Okay. And your last one, Larry, you want the parking.
Oh, the parking ratios. Yep. How could I forget that?
I don't know.
In, in a different situation, there have been some development proposals in areas. The most recent one was now that the whole Kmart Sears issue has, has kind of come to a head. A representative from the property owner had come in to look at the Sears or the Kmart Plaza for potential redevelopment there. And we were looking at the parking ratios and even using the existing ratio, which number nine in your packet is on the bottom half of the page. It really didn't make a lot of sense, given the range of uses that you'd expect to see in a redeveloped plaza like that. So we had talked about this several years ago, about getting rid of that approach and seeing if we can't simplify it, but still control the, the, the change and how you calculate the shared parking. So it boils down to determining the number of separate uses in, in a, in a development like that. Previously, we had said up to five would get a 10% reduction. I have suggested in, in this proposal, if you have three or more, up to five, of separate uses in a, in a common development, that they'd automatically get a 10% reduction, assuming the cross-traffic and combined use, combined trip type usage. And then if it were six or more separate uses, then they would get 20% reduction. And just to have a simplify the process, if the site isn't big enough to have six separate uses, the maximum they might possibly gets 10%. That would be determined, all of it, obviously, to site plan review anyway.
Foolish question, Larry. Because one property that I know has a shared parking ratio is the one that had the Settles Glass, the Mexican Restaurant, and some other stuff.
Yep.
How does that ratio work in correlation to how those businesses are run? Because I know when they took away for the bike trail, there was, you know.
Yeah, we reduced it slightly there.
But is that seemingly working?
Well, I think they actually ended up getting a variance at one point. But aside from that, it only works as long as those businesses stay the same.
Stay, correct.
And if they change, then that has to get tweaked.
The ratio goes back and forth.
The concern that I have with, with using the, the present chart is that it doesn't take into account enough the fact that a person would drive to a plaza and shop at three or four similar stores that have the same hours. And, and that gets lost in this whole thing because this is geared to totally separate uses or at least totally separate hours. And that's how you're benefiting on the parking ratio, is that you're assuming that, oh, well, this guy's only going to be open in the morning and the restaurant's only going to be open at night. And well, so what? That, you know, you have, you have multiple trips combined when you go to a plaza. You, you may go back and forth to your car a few times with, with parcels, but you don't move your car unless it's a huge plaza and you drive around to the other end of it. You never go out onto the street.
The Coles Plaza, what's, what was that one done under in terms of the number of spaces? Do you remember, Larry?
I think the last few changes still, still use this schedule.
The only, the only reason why I ask is out of, out of any of them, Milford, the only time I've ever had trouble is, is, is in the middle of winter when there's a bunch of snow taking a bunch of spaces, or right at Christmas time, there's, there's limited space at Coles. But otherwise, I mean, I think in general, our parking provides maybe more parking than we need. And the only thing is, I'm, I'm saying that because I know some of the others are under the old, old requirements, which I think were way more than we needed. And I'm trying to, trying to get it, you know, trying to look at it in terms of where we are now and whether, whether we're close to where we need to be or not. Because there's too much probably asphalt as is, so I, you know.
Well, the Coles Plaza, the problem specifically with that is the, the snow storage in the winter and, and how poorly it's done.
Also, with Coles, the problem is that like 30% of the parking spaces are in the rear that nobody goes to. If you drive around the rear, you could, you could put another shopping center back there for what, for what the rear. Huh? No, I'm just saying, that was built, that was built with the archaic parking regulations we had from before. And the, again, during, during the winter or during the Christmas time, it's filled up. But it's not filled according to the number of spaces that the park.
If you drive around back to your point, you will find them, but no one knows they're there.
Well, they're supposed to be assigning those to the staff, but you know how that is.
Again, no one knows they're there.
So, so at any rate, the, the idea of trying to update this, because I think it, it may have been five years or more ago that we talked about this last. But as I say, at that time, we were looking at up to five would be a 10% automatic reduction. And I don't know that you need to go that far. I would say three to five at 10% and then six above would be 20.
The only problem I have with it is if we put it with just a site plan review, then we have no, they follow it in the thing. I think the parking reduction should be a special permit by the planning board. So it doesn't drag, it doesn't drag on. Just so we have, we have some control because if we see X number of thing, X number of spa, building spaces, with this thing will approve it. And then if they change, the next time they should have to have a, a special permit to say whether it's going to be that way or not.
Well, but it wouldn't matter what the specific uses were under this scenario. It would just matter the number.
It would make, make us, I'm not going to, I'm not going to put in four restaurants and all the spaces are taken up at the same time. Again, if we put it in a, just as a site plan review, then we don't have as much control if they follow, if they have the, follow the site plan regulations. I think if we have a, again, a special permit by the planning board, which would take, it's not a, a long process to go through. I don't think that would be a problem.
But it's, it's not special permit now.
I know, but I, I mean, if you're changing. I just want to have, I just want to be able to, to say yes or no. Not just come in, okay, we're following the regulations and that's the way it's going to be. Joe, do you see any?
No, I'm just wondering, based on what we normally, I mean, other than restaurants, we would have no control over it anyways. That's about the only issue that we would be able to get into. Otherwise, we, we don't have enough definition to be able to tell what somebody's going to put in commercially.
Well, again, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, so the only thing I'm thinking is, is what we, I mean, it's not, again, as long as it's coming back to us as part of the process, it doesn't, it doesn't make it onerous on, on anybody anyways.
Right.
The only thing I'm thinking, the other thing I'm thinking is we get into parking though, and to a certain extent is just a couple of things that, that I, you know, that I end up seeing that, that we don't define in parking right now. And, you know, it goes beyond this, but is it, is it time to look at parking again in a certain sense? I'm not sure, in the last go-through, Larry, do we, do we define where people have to put carriage returns and stuff like that in terms of losing parking spaces?
No, because if, because if they, if they, if they need to, if they want to add an entire carriage return area in the field of parking, and they didn't get it approved on the site plan, depending upon how it affects their parking count, if they go below, they need to get a variance.
Yeah, but I, I get the feeling that the people who put carriage returns out in the middle of, of, of a lot of parking spots, it never came back to us one way or another. And, and I'm also, I'm also thinking that that's the way a lot of them do that. And it's a time for us to, to have in our, in our bylaw that, that they need to show where those things are going to go so that they get put into the count. And again, I'm not trying to get more asphalt. I'm trying, I'm trying to, to figure out where we are with parking and.
No, but if, if a new site plan comes in, they show that. So the ones that, that are putting them in show it on the site plans.
But they move them.
Well, if they move them, there's, there's no net change. If, if they're adding another one, then they'd be coming back. So.
Places I've seen, they haven't added.
But the, the idea of, of this, this amendment was to get at the ratio thing.
I, I understand that. I'm, and I don't have a problem with that. I'm just, I'm just wondering how well parking works in general, I guess, is, is what I'm wondering in terms of dealing with this issue.
Well, I think the new, the new ratios clearly are better than they had been the prior two times because you see developments like the Hannaford Plaza where you have two, two new buildings that not only physically wiped out a bunch of spaces, but were able to still meet the current ratios in some cases, without even doing the, the shared parking credit calculations. They had the drugstore and the building that, what, Five Guys, that went in first and then, then the drugstore out in the middle of the parking lot.
Five Guys was part of the mall. That was part of the original mall. That was, that was, yeah, that was in there, a thing. It was, it's just the.
But the uses changed to, to go, to get all those restaurants in there.
Oh, no, absolutely.
So the restaurant changes, they started having to use the shared parking credit to make, to make it work. But there was still enough for the new drugstore to work.
That's, goes on to what I was saying. If we had Blockbuster there and all of a sudden we got Five Guys, now we're going to have a, we're going to have a, yeah, but again.
You could have a parking conflict or, the only other thing, if you're going to start reducing and giving credits for shared use, then you, you may also, to Joe's idea of showing carriage returns, is get into the concept of where the snow dumps are going to be. Because if you're going to start talking about percentages and you're reducing it, and, you know.
Well, I, I, I think we, we should require.
It needs to be shown.
Snow storage be shown on the plan. Because, because that, to me lately has been one of the bigger issues. The other issue that I, that I find in going into parking lots a lot of times lately that's been, is that based on our, based in on our parking lot size or space size, is that if you get a light pole in that space, a lot of times, especially if, if you have a bigger vehicle, your vehicle's sitting out into the end of the thing because, because the, the case on for the lights are, take up significant amount of space. And to me, it makes those spaces somewhat difficult.
Yeah, we try to get them to, put them at the, the corners.
Well, I know, that's what we try to do, and they haven't done that in all cases. And I, and again, that's what I'm saying in terms of, of looking at the parking thing. To me, it becomes an issue of, of, you know, it doesn't make them work as smoothly as they could unless we try to force them to put it into areas where there isn't cars parked. Because in the middle of the space, you got a two-foot case on there.
But all of these other things are design-related elements of site plan review. So those things you do anyway irrespective of what the ratio is. So I understand that it's important and maybe we do need to make other amendments. But, you know, the, that still wouldn't have anything to do with the ratio. We could do all those changes and keep the ratio.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm not saying anything about the ratio. I understand the ratio and I'm, I'm just saying that if we're changing parking, then do we need to look, should we look at all of them at one point in time as well as the ratio? That's all I'm saying.
Well, yeah, we probably ought to look at the other issues. It's just I wouldn't try to do it all at once. That, I mean, I only have so much time in, in a sequence of town meetings to put all the stuff together. So, I mean, if we wait to try to do it more comprehensively, it's going to take longer to get things done. If we can tweak some of these things and pick them off here and there as we go, as long as we've got the big picture in mind, then we'll eventually get there and.
Yeah, but I don't think you really want to start, sit here and start piecemealing parking. If we can identify some of the issues of parking, we should attack the problem and do it once, I think. I don't know what advantage there is to go to every town meeting and add another aspect to it. I don't think what we're requesting is going to be overly significant or difficult to follow.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I guess you've heard the other concerns, at least my other concerns, in, in terms of, of. I, I don't have a, I don't have an issue with the shared, shared usage. I mean, I, I think it makes sense. You know, if, if Babe feels it should go is, is a special permit, I don't, you know, coming back here, I, I don't, I don't have.
Just as long as we had some control.
Yeah, I don't have a, I don't have an issue with that in that, you know, this board is, is pretty much proactive with, with development.
Absolutely.
I don't think we're going to, we're going to stand as an impediment to someone going forward, so.
Well, would you want to, I mean, I can, obviously, that's a fairly easy change to make in the text. If, if you want to do this.
I'm not opposed to doing it.
Along with the C B.
I think this one is easy to.
Two zoning articles for the fall and.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's called special, okay.
Cool.
All right, but it's by special permit. Okay.
Thank you, Larry.
Thanks.
Who's going to buy it first?